The House will come to order. Members, please take their seats. Sergeant at Arms.
The House is now in session. All persons not entitled to privileges on the floor, please retire to the gallery.
The members will rise and be led in prayer by Reverend Dr. Gregory M. Howard, Senior Pastor, First Baptist Church, East End, Newport News, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America, which will be led by the delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring.
Let us pray. Almighty God, the first cause and first mover, who is eternally righteous in essence and just in cosmic adjudication, it is you, God, that we desire of your presence and seek your guidance and the administration of your loving will for the Commonwealth of Virginia and all of its residents. So help us to understand that different does not mean deficient or defective, but divinely deliberate. Help us to understand that the privilege of setting public policy is not partisan undertaking, but a ministry in the meeting of the needs and the establishing of a mutually communal expectation of all who reside in this land. Again, God bless our General Assembly, and in particular, this session. Bless each elected servant with a mind and, yes, a heart for the shared interests of all Virginians and the confidence to choose principle and human dignity over party or personal comforts. Let us listen to one another and help us to learn to listen to those whom we represent, who only desire an opportunity to access boots so that they will then be able to proudly pull up their own bootstraps. Have us, God, to work together, as you do with the angels in glory, to be a model of the beloved community, that you will have this state, this nation, and global society to be. This is our collective prayer that we ask, not merely in the name of our righteous ancestors, but in your sovereign, loving, and gracious name. Amen. So let it be an ache.
To the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The members will answer the roll call by indicating their presence on the electronic voting board. The clerk will close the roll.
Madam Speaker, a quorum is present.
Pursuant to House Rule 3, I've examined and approved the Journal for the House of Delegates for Thursday, January 23, 2020. Motions and resolutions under Rule 39 pursuant to Rule House 40 are now in order. The clerk shall announce the First Morning Hour Order of Business, including any clerk's announcements and communications.
First Morning Hour Order of Business. I have a communication from the Speaker dated January 24, 2020, to the Clerk of the House of Delegates. I have made the following committee assignments and changes effective today. Willett Rodney, removed from the Committee on Communications, Technology, and Innovation. Helmer Dan, appointed to the Committee on Communications, Technology, and Innovation. Sincerely, Eileen Philercorn, Speaker, House of Delegates. That concludes my announcements. Other announcements, members, please use your Request to Speak buttons.
The delegate from Newport News, Delegate Price.
Madam Speaker, I rise for an introduction.
Delegate Price, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. Our invocation today was offered by the Reverend Dr. Gregory M. Howard. He is the Senior Pastor of First Baptist Church, East End of Newport News. He also serves as the Interim Dean and Associate Professor of Homiletics and Practical Theology at the Samuel D. Witt Proctor School of Theology at Virginia Union University. Go Panthers! Further, Reverend Howard is the President of the Baptist General Convention of Virginia, whose member churches represent about 30,000 Virginians. He is an author and a member of Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated. And last, but of course not least, he is a devoted husband and father. Reverend Howard believes that we are, no, excuse me, we have been blessed with life and created in the image of God to be with and for one another. Therefore, he strives to tear down the many obstacles that keep us from coming together in godly communion. With gratitude for our invocation today, I hope you will join me in giving Reverend Dr. Gregory Howard a warm House welcome.
Thank you, Reverend Howard, for being with us again. It's great to see you and thank you for what you do and for your inspiring invocation this morning. Delegate from Richmond City, Delegate McQuinn.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise for announcement.
Delegate McQuinn, you have the floor.
Mrs. Madam Speaker, I want to make certain that, to remind the members that on Monday, the Virginia Cancer Caucus 2020 Reception, which is chaired by Senator Ruff and myself, it would be between 8:00 and 9:15 at 300B Subcommittee Room in the Pocahontas Building and hear from leading cancer researchers on the many innovative things that are happening in the area of cancer prevention and treatment. So once again, I want to remind the members, Monday, the 27th, from 8:00 until 9:15 in 300B, please, please stop by to see the many experts, to hear from the experts on these issues. Another announcement, Madam Speaker.
Can we please have some quiet? Delegate McQuinn, you have the floor.
Thank you. The next announcement is about Capitol Square basketball game, and Delegate Russell has shared some things with you in reference to that. I am going to be asking, as we always do, about 100% participation in contributions to the Massy Cancer Center. This is all about raising funds to...
Please refrain from speaking on the floor, go in the back. Delegate McQuinn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. This is all, once again, about raising funds to help just eradicate cancer and to support all of the great work that they are doing. This is in the 12th year of the Capitol Square Basketball Classic, and you'll be hearing more from us, once again, about that particular issue. On February 20, 2020 will be the basketball game. Again, I'm focusing on helping to raise the contribution funds for the Massy Cancer Center. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Delegate McQuinn. Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Simon.
Madam Speaker, I rise for an announcement.
Delegate Simon, you have the floor.
Madam Speaker, members of the body, I have at my desk a sign-on sheet for a resolution. I am not carrying it. This has got a very, very fine chief patron, the Speaker herself. This is a resolution to commend everybody's favorite baseball team, the Washington Nationals, on their accomplishments and winning the 2019 World Series. And I understand that the patron would very much appreciate it if we could get everyone signed on to this as a co-patron. And so if you haven't yet had the opportunity to do it, I will send it around. I'm willing to send it around, but I've also been given instructions, very strict instructions from the patron, that I must get it back if that happens. So what I'm gonna do is hold on to it here at my desk. If you guys can come sign on to it, I may send it around once, but if y'all can help me keep track of it, I'd appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Delegate Simon. Delegate from Fredericksburg, Delegate Cole.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise for the purpose of an introduction.
Delegate Cole, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Today, joining us in the gallery, we have Muhammad Ghulah and Abba Mabuda, Executive Director and Organizing Director of Engage Action Virginia. Engage Action is an issue advocacy organization that works to uplift, advocate, and elect Muslim candidates running in the Commonwealth of Virginia. And we are excited to have them here with us today. And I just ask the House to give them a warm House welcome.
Wonderful you could be with us. Enjoy your day on Capitol Square. Great to see you. Delegate from Anassas, Delegate Carter.
Madam Speaker, I rise for an introduction.
Delegate Carter, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, ladies and gentlemen of the House, we are joined today in the gallery by two very important groups, the Liberal Gun Club and the Socialist Rifle Association. Ladies and gentlemen of the House, these two organizations focus on educating and empowering folks to have safe and responsible firearm ownership and advocate for particularly vulnerable and marginalized groups to have the ability to engage in self and community defense. I hope that you all join me in giving them a warm House welcome.
Welcome to the Liberal Gun Club and the Socialist Rifle Association. Enjoy your day on Capitol Square. Pursuant to House Rule 30, the Journal shall reflect that the following members are away on pressing personal business and are granted leave from today's session. Delegate Goditis. The clerk shall announce the next order of business.
Second Morning Hour Order of Business. The next order of business is the announcement of member requests to move legislation from any uncontested to regular calendar. On page six of the calendar, House Bill 371 has been moved to the regular calendar. On page six, House Bill 378 moved to the regular calendar. Page seven, House Bill 637 moved to the regular calendar. Page 15, House Bill 1562 moved to the regular calendar.
The clerk shall announce the next order of business.
Third Morning Hour Order of Business. The next order of business is the announcement for requests by members for legislation to go by for the day and the subsequent motion by the Majority Leader. Page six, House Bill 371, by for the day. Page 19, Senate Joint Resolution 1, by for the day.
The delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring.
Madam Speaker, I move that the legislation is announced by the clerk, go by for the day.
The delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring, moves that legislation is just announced by the clerk, go by for the day. As many as favor that motion will say aye. Those opposed, the motion is agreed to. The delegate from Newport News, Delegate Mullin.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise for a point of personal privilege.
Yeah, we're about to now, is there, yeah. The clerk shall announce the next order of business.
Fourth Morning Hour Order of Business. The next order of business is for points of personal privilege. The Speaker requests members to use their Request to Speak button.
Delegate Mullin, you have the floor.
Thank you again, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise for a point of personal privilege.
Delegate Mullin.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I love a good headline in a newspaper, and I just wanted to share this one with everybody here. William and Mary Wallops James Madison with overwhelming offensive force. 12 three-pointers, 58% from shots from the field. William and Mary's men's basketball came away with an 88-75 win over JMU over at Kaplan Arena. That is a wallop. I just wanted to congratulate them and mention also that William and Mary player Andy Van Villett had a career-high 22 points and eight blocks. Wow, I know I could never do that. So, Madam Speaker, I just wanted to take a moment to congratulate the tribe on being first place in their conference, and I wanted to say to my good friend from Harrisonburg, there's always next year.
The clerk will call the calendar.
Calendar for the House of Delegates for January 24. House Bill's on third reading, Uncontested Calendar. House Bill 516, House Bill 1246, House Bill 1248.
Shall the bills pass? The clerk will close the roll.
Ayes 99, nays zero, abstentions zero.
Ayes 99, nays zero, abstentions zero, the bills pass.
House Bill's on third reading, Regular Calendar. House Bill 33, a bill to amend and reenact Section 53.1, 165.1 of the Code of Virginia relating to parole, exception to the limitation on the application of parole statutes.
Shall the bill pass?
Madam Speaker.
Yes, the delegate from Albemarle, Delegate Bell.
I rise to speak to the bill.
Delegate Bell, you have the floor.
Members of the House, this was the measure that we had the, some discussion on yesterday with regards to amendments, but didn't talk about the substance of the bill. And there was some discussion about how parole worked, and I've had a chance to talk to the members of the parole board to make sure that we got the facts right. First, I'd like to confirm who this will apply to. Now, the number prior to the delegates' patrons amendment from yesterday was 305 offenders. It's an estimated of 280 offenders who are violent, who will be affected by this. There are six nonviolent. I don't speak to them, I'm only speaking to the violent offenders. Now, the violent offenders are broken out as follows, and there's an estimate for the sexual assault offenders, because as you know, we took out those where the victim was a child, but left in those where the victim was an adult. DOC didn't break it out that way, so my estimate is based on historic figures. First, there are 112 offenders who committed first-degree homicide. That's premeditated murder. As you know, we had an effort to take them out of this batch, and that was rejected. Second, there are 50 who committed robbery. There are 12 who committed various forms of rape and sexual assault. There were eight who committed rape. One who committed aggravated sexual battery. One who committed penetration with an inanimate object. One who committed forced palstomy. One who committed sexual assault or attempted rape. There are 35 abductions. There are 31 second-degree homicides. There's 25 assaults, these would be felony assaults. Eight burglaries, five manslaughter's, and two drug sales. Now, if this passes, how will this work? I talked to the parole board. Now, there's a lot of criminal lawyers in this room. Many of us are old enough to be in our 50s or older, but parole is something that mostly took place in the 90s, so it's been some time. So, there's a statute that says when someone will first become eligible for parole based on the offenses and their overall record. By all accounts, everyone we just identified, all or almost all of them will be immediately eligible for parole under this bill. When that happens, the crime victim, who is registered through a system called Vine, V-I-N-E, will get notified as soon as the offender gets his eligibility. If it's a murder case, usually the person's, the victim's mom or her dad. If it's a sexual assault case, it'll usually be the victim herself. Now, this law, if it passes, will go into effect on July 1, and a few days later, these victims will start getting their notices, and then the phone calls will start. It'll go something like this. It'll be the mom, and she'll say, hey, Mike, just got this notice from the parole board. Yeah, he's coming up for parole hearing. No, it's actually been 22 years. Yeah, I know, I know. We were told we'd never have to worry about this again, that it was over. Apparently, the General Assembly changed the law. Now, I don't know. I don't know. No, I don't know. We just have to start getting together again. So, then the phone will be hung up, and there'll be tears, and anger, and shouting, and calls to other people, and more calls, and cousins, and neighbors, and friends will be brought in, because they've got to get their presentation and information to the parole board. Now, if you've ever spoken to the mother of a murdered child, you understand that they're never the same. Never, ever the same. Sometimes they keep a shrine in the bedroom, they don't move anything. Now, these crimes are all 20 years old, so probably those shrines have been broken down. People have moved, they've moved on. So, more likely, it's a box up in the attic or down in the basement where they go, and they start to get the pictures, the yearbooks, the report cards. Now, when a child is murdered, evidence is that it increases the rate of divorce. So some of the people won't be able to do this with their spouse. They'll have to call their spouse, from whom they divorced in part because of the murder. Now, talk about what they can assemble. They'll call siblings and cousins. If the person who was killed was a child, they'll try to track down that best friend he had in the sixth grade, because they're gonna have to present this to the parole board. Now, the worst of this whole process, or there's lots of worsts, but the worst, is that it doesn't end. This is, we had a dialogue on this yesterday, confirmed with the parole board. Once you're eligible, if you are not granted parole, you're eligible to apply the next year, and the next year, and the next year, every year thereafter. The parole board does have the power to extend that time period to three years. That's the longest it can be. So then you're appearing every three years. If it passes, and if it's signed into law by the governor, this bill will force crime victims who never asked for this role, certainly didn't want it, to be part of this process year after year, again and again, until they die, or until the defendant dies, or until he's released. Now, this bill has something new to the parole process. It would allow the prosecutor to present information. That's certainly not a bad thing, but it's been 20 years. Prosecutors move, prosecutors die, prosecutors go on the bench and are no longer really appropriate for doing that role. I was a prosecutor in the 90s. My entire arc as a legislator, from new back- benching bomb thrower to the chair of courts, has happened since those bills. I don't have files for that anymore. So here's what you have. Again, they will have to do it over and over. Now, this sounds theoretical, so I wanted to have a human face for this, and I want to share with you what a constituent of mine has shared with me. His name is John Sanders. He lives in Fluvana. It's not where the crime that is involved in with the parole board occurred. But here's what he wanted to testify to in committee. Here's what he said, John Sanders. "On November 4, 1991, my eight-year-old son was murdered by his mother. While he was sleeping, she hit him over a dozen times with an axe, then poured gasoline on his bed and set it on fire. She was convicted of first-degree murder and arson and sentenced to two life sentences. Little did I know that 18 years later, I would be receiving a letter stating that she was seeking parole. After 18 years, all of the sick feelings came rushing back. I cannot tell you all of the nightmares I had even of the thought of her walking free. She was denied parole, and we asked her to grant it that she not be able to seek parole for the maximum allowed, three years. After that, the cycle has repeated itself with the same sick feelings for my family and myself. We have gone through several parole hearings, and during each one, we are subjected to reliving the events over and over again. I know that after a hearing, we have two good years before we will receive another letter from the correction office stating that once again, she will be seeking parole. The cycle goes on. Every time she goes for parole, she has hope of being freed. For us, each time she goes before the parole board, we have the fear she will be freed. There's not been a day in the last 24, excuse me, that's 24 would be 29 years, that I have not thought about what my son must have gone through in his last moments of life. The parole hearings intensify those feelings by at least tenfold, so I beg you, do not change this law and subject other victims to the torture that these parole hearings have put my family and me through." Of course, that's just the hearings. The victims, of course, are even more worried that if they don't attend, or if they do and the parole board rules against them, they're gonna run into the man who raped them in the grocery store or the man who killed their son on a street corner. I hope you'll vote against this bill. Now, I'd like to end with a direct appeal to my friends across the aisle. I've been reading letters, press releases, your literature, the campaign, about your desire to make changes to the criminal justice system. And I can say with certainty, from watching the bills moving their way through, that there will be many, many chances to do that. It appears already there will be a bill, and I've spoken to the patron, to change the rules from marijuana, marijuana possession. There's clearly going to be a bill to make it less punishing for people that commit grand larceny at certain levels. They're gonna raise the larceny threshold. And those will come up, and we'll debate on them, and if the majority votes for them, they'll pass and become law on July 1. But none of these will have the direct impact on crime victims as the bill you're about to vote on. This crime list, these are not victimless crimes. Behind each of these crimes is a mother or father grieving for the loss of their loved one. There's somebody who was herself attacked, raped. And this will force them to relive that trauma, that horror, effectively for the rest of their lives. I respectfully ask my Democratic friends to reconsider the engrossment vote they had yesterday and to vote against this bill. Thank you.
Delegate from Norfolk, Delegate Lindsey.
Madam Speaker, speak to the measure.
Delegate Lindsey, you have the floor.
Madam Speaker, to the extent that I, well, I'll start by saying I agree with everything that Delegate Bell said, to the extent that I don't contradict it at this point. When I'm confused about what I recall, or what history dictates, or even conflicting information that I get from agency heads, I tend to look to the statute. We're all lawyers, we're governed by the statute, and the statute is the law, and it speaks to exactly what is and is not the power that is to be employed by the parole board and how do these circumstances impact those who come before the board, be they persons who are in support of the person incarcerated or the person who's against. So I'll start by, section 53.1-151, eligibility for parole. And the thing that we need to understand, because there's power in our words, is that when someone is parole-eligible, that doesn't mean the door opens and they get released. That means that that's that absolute first day that they can be considered from release for any period of incarceration less than what was imposed by a judge or jury. Under the code, the first time that a person is eligible for parole, and this is in the general sense, is after serving one-fourth of their term of imprisonment and at least 12 years of that term. The second time that a person is eligible for parole is after serving one-third of that term of imprisonment imposed and having served at least 13 years of incarceration. Third time is after having served one-half of the imposed sentence or at least 14 years of incarceration. And the fourth and subsequent, or subsequent time, is after having served three-fourths of that term of incarceration and having served at least 15 years in custody. Continuing with the statute, and you know, and we're the ones who make the law, 53.1-155, when it talks about investigations prior to release, persons can opt in on, you know, on being able to be notified about the status of parole and the status of parole review. The law says that if they notify, if they elect to be notified, that we're required, or when I say we, that the parole board is required to allow their input as it relates to whether or not someone can be paroled. The law further states that there's a circumstance where they can simply have reported, and whether that report, as to their position, is in writing or is oral, that information is taken, is put in the file, and it is always under review as it relates to whether or not that person is suitable for release. The other thing that I'll tell you is that when you're talking about parole, we, this General Assembly, have come up with a set of laws that govern the actions and conduct of persons who look upon these incarcerated persons and determine whether they are fit to be reintegrated into society. And I also talked to members of the parole board, because I wanted to make sure that I understood the particulars well. And what they explained to me is that simply because someone becomes eligible, does that mean that that favors their release? And that they look at a lot of different things. They look at the person's institutional adjustment. They look at whether or not the person ever made amends by admitting their culpability and asking for forgiveness, you know, to the person's most harm. They look at whether or not the person has the mental acumen to do as instructed and what their institutional history had been in terms of were these people, were these individuals who were engaged in a lot of insurrection and fighting, or were these people who were compliant with the rules and regulations of the Department of Correction? Now... Now, yesterday, we talked about different categories of persons and how we needed to make sure that we kept the community safe. And in large measure, I think the parole board does that by their conduct. And when you look at the statistics, overwhelmingly, people who come up for parole on the first time don't get it. And the reason that we have so many people right now that have gone beyond the age of geriatric release is because these people have not been seen to be fit to be reintegrated in society. Now, something was mentioned about sexual assault, and I think it's important to understand that even if a person has committed a heinous sexual act, and has ultimately served their time, and been seen as now being fit for release, reintegration back into the community, that's not an automatic, and overwhelmingly, that does not happen. Because we, as a General Assembly, have seemed fit to have something that's called the civil process, where people are, after they're released from penal custody, they're then taken to the VCBR, which holds all persons who have been convicted of certain sexual offenses, to determine, and takes them through a course of treatment, to make a determination as to if or when that person is ever suited for being reintegrated into the community. I submit that there are a lot of people who are much smarter than me, who have looked at this process, who have put together a system and a failsafe that keeps us safe. And for that reason, I believe the measure should pass, and that would be my request.
The delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, speaking to the bill.
Delegate Herring, you have the floor.
I thank you, Madam Speaker, and members of this chamber. For me, this bill is about correcting an error that the courts have made, and it's about the integrity of our judicial system. Simply, jury instructions were not provided about the status of parole in the Commonwealth of Virginia. That's all. And the cases that were mentioned, it is horrific, and it is terrifying, and my empathy and sympathy goes to the victims and the families. But we have to correct a wrong here, and our judicial system failed, and the court has found that. So I ask you to support this measure.
The clerk will close the roll.
Ayes 52, nays 45, abstentions zero.
Ayes 52, nays 45, abstention zero, the bill passes.
House bills on second reading, uncontested calendar. House Bill 115, a bill to amend and reenact sections 8.01, 581.16, and other sections of the Code of Virginia, and to repeal section 54.1, 2923.1 of the Code of Virginia, programs to address career fatigue in certain health care providers, civil immunity with an emergency clause.
The delegate from Arlington, Delegate Hope.
Speak to the bill.
Delegate Hope.
Madam Speaker, House Bill 115 authorizes the creation of a physician fatigue and wellness program. Studies have shown that physicians generally have higher rates of emotional exhaustion and depression. Suicide rates are one and a half times higher for male physicians, and two to four times higher for female physicians, in comparison to the general population. Currently, if a physician is developing an issue, they may not seek help from their physician colleague, because that physician colleague is legally required to report the physician to the Board of Medicine. What House Bill 115 would do is it would solve that problem by expanding the immunity to physicians who provide services to other physicians suffering from career fatigue. This is modeled after the Lawyers Helping Lawyers program, to provide much-needed bridge to the treatment while still holding physicians accountable for patient care. Hope it be the pleasure of the body to engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
Page four, House Bill 165, a bill to amend and reenact section 54.1, 2700, and other sections of the Code of Virginia, and to amend the Code of Virginia by adding in Article 2 of Chapter 27 of Title 54.1, Sections numbered 54.1 and other sections related to teledentistry, reported from health, welfare, and institutions with substitute.
The delegate from Arlington, Delegate Hope.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, I move the committee substitute.
Shall the substitute be agreed to? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the substitute is agreed to. Delegate Hope.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, members of the body. House Bill 165, unlike telemedicine, Virginia currently has no statutory definition for teledentistry. This legislation is designed to establish a patient protection to foster innovation in the marketplace. Here's specifically what the bill accomplishes. It defines teledentistry in the Commonwealth, ensures that the Board of Dentistry has oversight, it requires the establishment of a bona fide dentist-patient relationship, it provides privacy protections of all digital files and information. There's been a great deal of hard work on this, we finally have peace in the valley. I think we have a very strong bill that will protect patients and allow for ongoing innovation in the marketplace. Hope it be the will of the body to engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
Madam Speaker, I'm sorry, will a delegate yield for a question?
Delegate from Culic Pepper, Delegate Fides, will the delegate yield?
I yield.
Delegate will yield. Delegate Fides, you have the floor.
I would ask the delegate, and I apologize if he said this early and I didn't hear it, is teledentistry currently allowed in Virginia, and this is adding additional regulations? Or is this adding a framework for where teledentistry can actually take place?
Madam Speaker, I'd respond to the gentleman by saying, we have some guidance out there that's usually modeled after telemedicine, but this has specific legal guardrails for teledentistry. It hasn't been defined before, and we're doing so in the code.
Thank you.
I think the delegate, Madam Speaker, would it be possible to move this to the regular calendar after engrossment?
House Bill 165 will be moved to the regular calendar after engrossment. House Bill 174, a bill to amend and reenact section 55.1, 703 of the Code of Virginia relating to Virginia Residential Property Disclosure Act, required disclosures for buyer to beware, marine clays, reported from General Laws.
Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Kriesig.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, members of the House, HB 174 amends the Virginia Residential Property Disclosure Act to add required disclosures for marine clays into the buyer beware statements prior to purchase of a home. Marine clay is a common soil type in the Mount Vernon District where I represent. Homes built on marine clay are more susceptible to foundational and structural damage caused by flooding, erosion, and other natural events, because marine clay expands when it gets wet, which I know firsthand, in fact. This legislation will make homebuyers aware of the problems associated with marine clay so that it can use due diligence in preparing for possible damages. I hope it's the will of the body to engross the bill, pass it on to its third reading.
House Bill 175, a bill to amend the Code of Virginia by adding a section numbered 55.1, 704.1, relating to Virginia Residential Property Disclosure Act, required disclosures radon gas, reported from General Laws with substitute.
The delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Kriesig.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, I move the committee substitute.
Shall the substitute be agreed to? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, the substitute is agreed to. Delegate Kriesig.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, members of the House. HB 175 does essentially the same thing as the other HB 174, amends the Virginia Residential Property Disclosure Act to add required disclosures for radon gas into the buyer beware statements prior to purchase of a home. If you don't know, radon's an odorless gas that's the natural byproduct of uranium decomposition, which seeps through the ground and gathers in the lowest floors of buildings and homes. I'd recommend everybody has their home tested for radon. Virginia has one of the largest uranium deposits in the country. Prolonged exposure to radon gas has many health risks, including lung cancer. However, radon can easily be tested and mitigated for by licensed professionals. This legislation will inform homeowners about these risks and give them the resources to protect themselves and their families. I ask that the body engross this bill and pass it to its third reading.
House Bill 176, a bill to amend and reenact section 55.1, 1808, and 55.1, 1990 of the Code of Virginia, relating to Property Owners Association Act and Virginia Condominium Act, contract disclosure statement, extension of right of cancellation, reported from General Laws with amendments.
The delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Simon.
Madam Speaker, I move the committee amendments.
Shall the amendments be agreed to? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the amendment is agreed to. Delegate Simon.
Madam Speaker, members of the House, this bill corrects a major wrong that was done last year. Delegate from Fairfax, I think it was Delegate Bolova, had a bill last year that said that your sole remedy, in the event that you received an incomplete package from the condo association or the homeowners association you're about to buy into, was to cancel that contract within three days of receiving the incomplete package. What this bill does is it creates a remedy, that awful piece of legislation we all passed and I voted for last year, and says that you actually have an additional option in that case. You could actually extend that right of cancellation for up to four days to allow buyers to get the additional missing information. You can also, in your initial real estate contract, build in an additional four days for that eventual violation. So for that reason, I hope it be the will of the body to engross this bill and pass it to its third reading.
House Bill 299, a bill to amend and reenact section 54.1, 3408 of the Code of Virginia relating to medical assistance administration of fluoride varnish, reported from health, welfare, and institutions with amendments.
The delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Sickles.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, I move the committee amendments.
Shall the amendments be agreed to? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, the amendments are agreed to. Delegate Sickles.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, members of the House. HB 299 is the Fluoride Varnish Freedom Act. It allows a medical assistant to possess and administer topical fluoride varnish pursuant to an oral or written order or standing protocol issued by a doctor of medicine, osteopathic medicine, or dentistry. So I urge the body to engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
House Bill 310, a bill to amend and reenact section 51.5, 154 of the Code of Virginia relating to Alzheimer's Disease and Related Disorders Commission, Sunset, reported from health, welfare, and institutions.
The delegate from Newport News, Delegate Simons.
Madam Speaker, I rise to speak to the bill.
Delegate Simons, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. HB 310 extends the Sunset provision of the Code for the Alzheimer's Disease and Related Disorders Commission from July 1st, 2020, to July 1st, 2023. This bill will allow the good work of the commission to continue to advise us on the care and treatment of Alzheimer's in Virginia. I ask that the body engross this bill and pass it on to its third reading.
House Bill 371 has been moved to the regular calendar. House Bill 378 has been moved to the regular calendar. House Bill 517, a bill to amend and reenact section 54.1, 3300.1 of the Code of Virginia relating to collaborative practice agreements, nurse practitioners, physician assistants, reported from health, welfare, and institutions with amendment.
The delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Bolova.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, move the committee amendment.
Shall the amendment be agreed to? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, the amendment is agreed to. Delegate Bolova.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, ladies and gentlemen of the House. House Bill 517 is a recommendation of the Joint Commission on Health Care that was based on a study of pharmacy collaborative practice agreements. Under the current code, physician assistants and nurse practitioners may be practitioners in a collaborative practice agreement, however, they are not included in the list of practitioners, actually given the right to decide whether they want to participate in that agreement or not. The bill fixes that technical oversight. I move we engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
House Bill 538, a bill to amend and reenact section 33.2, 2901 of the Code of Virginia relating to the Virginia Metropolitan Transportation Authority Membership, reported from transportation.
The delegate from Richmond City, Delegate Carr.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, members of the House, House Bill 538 was introduced at the request of the City of Richmond. The bill would modify the membership of the Richmond Metropolitan Transportation Authority to require the appointment of one city council member to be appointed by the council president, with the remaining four-member appointments to be made by the mayor, with the approval of the city council. This provision only affects the City of Richmond appointments, as the statute currently provides both Henrico and Chesterfield County boards as supervisors the ability to appoint their respective five members. I move the House engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
House Bill 637 has been moved to the regular calendar. House Bill 648, a bill to amend and reenact sections 54.1, 2523, and 54.1, 2525 of the Code of Virginia relating to prescription monitoring program, information disclosed to the emergency department, information exchange, redisclosure, reported from health, welfare, and institutions.
The delegate from Montgomery, Delegate Hurst.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, speaking to the bill.
Delegate Hurst, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Ladies and gentlemen of the House, House Bill 648 simply clarifies the law about what information the prescription monitoring program is allowed to release, and adds the emergency department care coordination program as an allowed recipient of patient-specific PMP information. The EDCCP was established by the 2017 Virginia General Assembly to connect all emergency departments across the Commonwealth to better coordinate care and seek out high utilizers of the emergency room. One of the critical intents of the program was to give physicians a quick view of the patient's PMP report, so they could identify someone who might have issues with opioids. Unfortunately, though, after back and forth, it was determined that a change in law was necessary to ensure compliance with the EDCC and the PMP, which is why we have House Bill 648 before you. So I hope it be the pleasure of the body to engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
House Bill 778, a bill to amend and reenact section 63.2, 1506 of the Code of Virginia relating to family assessments timeline, reported from health, welfare, and institutions.
Delegate from Norfolk, Delegate Jones.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, members of the House. House Bill 778 simply increases the allowable time for completing a family assessment by a local Department of Social Services from 45 to 65 days. I hope that it is the will of the body to engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
House Bill 807, a bill to amend and reenact sections 32.1, 330.2, and 38.2, 3407.4 of the Code of Virginia relating to health care, explanation of benefits, sensitive health care services, reported from labor and commerce with amendment.
The delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Delaney.
Madam Speaker, I move the committee amendments.
Shall the amendment be agreed to? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, the amendments are agreed to. Delegate Delaney, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. House Bill 807 addresses how health carriers and Medicaid-managed care organizations provide an explanation of benefits to covered persons or recipients. The measure requires a state corporation commission to adopt regulations that establish alternative methods of delivery for the explanation of benefits that permit the receipt of an explanation of benefit by alternative method, provided that such alternative method is in compliance with the provisions of federal regulations regarding the right to request privacy protection for protected health information. This bill protects victims of sexual assault and domestic violence by ensuring that when they receive medical care for the varying injuries that they may be treated for, that they will also be protected when the primary policyholder is also the abuser. I hope it is the will of the body to engross this bill and pass it to its third reading.
House Bill 860, a bill to amend and reenact section 54.1, 3408 of the Code of Virginia relating to professional use by practitioners, inhaled asthma medicines, reported from health, welfare, and institutions with substitute.
The delegate from Alamooral, Delegate Bell.
Madam Speaker, I move the committee substitute.
Shall the substitute be agreed to? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, the substitute is agreed to. Delegate Bell.
Madam Speaker, members of the House, as many of you know, EpiPens, epinephrine, are allowed to be stocked and then administered in schools, because it's considered that they're safe and can be used in emergencies for asthma issues. This would treat albuterol, asthma inhalers the same. It allows them to have a stock prescription at the school, so not made out to a particular person. It also incorporates within the Good Samaritan statute, the person who administers them. Hope it be the pleasure of the House to engross the bill, pass it on to a third reading.
House Bill 904, a bill to amend and reenact section 63.2, 1509 of the Code of Virginia relating to child abuse and neglect reporting, public sports programs, reported from health, welfare, and institutions.
The delegate from Chesapeake, Delegate Hayes.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, members of the House. House Bill 904 is a measure to simply add to the code required reporting in the instances of sexual abuse for our kids and athletes. The code specifies, in many cases, specific titles that are required to report, and in the case of athletic directors, athletic coaches, it does not specify in the public space that they are to be required to report certain instances. I hope it's the will of the body to engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
House Bill 951, a bill to amend and reenact section 38.2, 2521 of the Code of Virginia relating to mutual assessment property and casualty insurers, notice by electronic delivery, reported from labor and commerce.
Delegate from Westmoreland, Delegate Ranson.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. House Bill 951 is related to how customers are notified about their insurance assessments. House Bill 951 seeks to amend the code so that an assessment can be sent to customers subject to an assessment, written notice by email. Current law states that currently, an assessment can only be done either in person or by mail. This bill simply says that a mutual assessment company can assess policyholders by email only if the members agree to be notified by email. We're basically modernizing the code. Other insurance companies are doing this already. I hope it is the pleasure of the body to engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
House Bill 983, a bill to amend and reenact sections 46.2, 1023, and other sections of the Code of Virginia relating Code of Virginia relating to traffic incident management vehicles, reported from Transportation.
The delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Delaney.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. House Bill 938 authorizes traffic incident management vehicles, defined in the bill, operated by persons who meet certain training requirements to be equipped with flashing red or red and white secondary warning lights. I hope it is the will of the body to engross this bill and pass it to its third reading.
House Bill 1000, a bill to amend and reenact Sections 54.13303 and other sections of the Code of Virginia and to repeal the third enactment of Chapter 790 of the Acts of Assembly of 2018 relating to prescription drugs, expedited partner therapy, labels, reported from Health, Welfare and Institutions.
The delegate from Arlington, Delegate Hope.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Members of the body, expedited partner therapy is the clinical practice of treating partners of patients diagnosed with STDs without an intervening medical evaluation in order to reduce the likelihood of a repeat infection, prevent complications from untreated STDs, and prevent further spread of STDs. Currently, local health department provides, those working with VDH can provide EPT without conducting an exam. There's no reason why EPT should be limited to local health department providers only. This bill would lift that sunset and current law and allow private practitioners to also provide EPT to their patients. Providers will no longer need a bona fide relationship and name and address of content patient would not be recognized. EPT is currently permissible in 44 states plus the District of Columbia, and it's recommended by the Centers for Disease Control. Hope it would be the pleasure of the body to engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
House Bill 1013, a bill to repeal the third enactment of Chapter 790 of the Acts of Assembly of 2018 relating to prescription requirements, treatment of sexually transmitted diseases, sunset, reported from Health, Welfare and Institutions.
The delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. As the clerk reported, this bill just lists the sunset on expedited partner therapy. I move that the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
House Bill 1098, a bill to amend and reenact Section 2.2203.2:3 of the Code of Virginia relating to the Secretary of Administration, Policy of the Commonwealth Regarding Employment of Individuals with Disabilities, Report Deadline, reported from General Laws.
The delegate from Richmond City, Delegate Carr.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Bill 1098 is an agency bill from the Virginia Department of Human Resource Management. The bill simply changes the date of the annual report on the Commonwealth's efforts for employing individuals with disabilities. Currently, state agencies submit reports to the Secretary of Administration through DHRM, which is due on July 1. However, the secretary is also required to report on the progress of the state agencies on July 1. This bill simply changes the date of the secretary's report to September 1 to allow for receipt and analysis of state agency reports. I move the House to engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
House Bill 1137, a bill to amend and reenact Section 63.2613 of the Code of Virginia relating to temporary assistance for needy families and Virginia Initiative for Education and Work, Hardship Exception, reported from Health, Welfare and Institutions.
The delegate from Arlington, Delegate Lopez.
Speaking to the bill, Madam Speaker.
Delegate Lopez, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. HB 1137 requires the Department of Social Services to keep track of the number of view participants who receive an exception for time limitations for TANF benefits due to hardship and the specific circumstances relied upon to grant those exceptions. The bill also requires that the department annually publish non-identifying statistics regarding this information. This information will help us collect data and better understand how the 24-month time limit and hardship exceptions are functioning. Madam Speaker, I move that we engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
House Bill 1148, a bill to amend and reenact Sections 51.5125 and several other sections of the Code of Virginia relating to Department for Aging and Rehabilitative Services, Respite Care Grant Program, State Long-Term Care Ombudsman Program, reported from Health, Welfare and Institutions with amendment.
The delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Keem.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move the committee amendments, please.
Shall the amendments be agreed to? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the amendments are agreed to. Delegate Keem.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. House Bill 1148 is a result of some code cleanup that we had to do back in 2012. The Department of Aging and the Department of Rehabilitation Services were merged, and as part of that merger, they had to go through the code to make sure that there weren't no programs that were redundant or obsolete. And so we went through some rule change, code changes. This is a further technical and some substantive, although non-substantial, changes that we had to make to make sure that the merger went in. So I hope it will be the pleasure of the House to engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
House Bill 1149, a bill to amend and reenact Sections 13.1603 and other sections of the Code of Virginia and to repeal 13.1768.1 of the Code of Virginia relating to the Virginia Stock Corporation Act, reported from Labor and Commerce with substitute.
The delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Keem.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move the committee substitute, please.
Shall the substitute be agreed to? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the committee, the substitute is agreed to. Delegate Keem.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And the only reason I put these two bills together side by side is to ensure that our clerk has practiced reading a lot of these code sections that were in place here. But this is another one of those bills where our state's code, especially in the context of the stock corporation law, we try to model it with the American Bar Association so that all 50 states have some consistency among our corporate laws. So once in a while, when the model law changes at the national level, we try to comply with that and make some tweaks here and there. The last time we did a major overhaul was in 2016 and then 2019. So this is some code language that we found that was inconsistent with some of the model language. So it's really just a technical update to the model language that we have in the books. I hope it will be the pleasure of the House to engross this bill and pass it on to its third reading. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
House Bill 1198, a bill to amend and reenact Sections 2.22471 and other sections of the Code of Virginia relating to the Virginia Board of Workforce Development, Updates as a Response to Federal Law, reported from General Laws with substitute.
The delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Tran.
Good afternoon, Madam Speaker. House Bill 1198 updates the code to reflect, oh, I apologize, Madam Speaker. I'd like to move the substitute.
Shall the substitute be agreed to? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, substitute is agreed to. Delegate Tran.
Thank you. House Bill 1198 updates the code to reflect the operations of the Virginia State Workforce Board, providing the board with flexibility to respond to Virginia's dynamic economy and workforce needs and to align the code with the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, the federal law that governs the public workforce system. I hope it's the pleasure of the body to engross this bill and its substitute and pass it on to the third reading.
House Bill 1260, a bill to amend and reenact Section 54.12957.5 of the Code of Virginia relating to Advisory Board on Athletic Training Membership, reported from Health, Welfare and Institutions.
The delegate from Middlesex, Delegate Hodges.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Ladies and gentlemen, House Bill 1260 provides that one member of the Advisory Board on Athletic Training shall be an athletic trainer who is currently licensed by the Board on Athletic Training, who has practiced in the Commonwealth for not less than three years and is employed in the public or private sector. Currently, the law requires the member to be employed only in the private sector. Hope it will be the pleasure of the body to engross the bill and pass it to its third reading.
House Bill 1261, a bill to amend and reenact Section 54.13408 of the Code of Virginia relating to athletic trainers, naloxone, or other opioid antagonists, reported from Health, Welfare and Institutions.
The delegate from Middlesex, Delegate Hodges.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Ladies and gentlemen, House Bill 1261, again dealing with athletic trainers, authorizes licensed athletic trainers to possess and administer naloxone or other opioid antagonists for overdose reversal pursuant to an oral or written order or standing protocol issued by the prescriber within his course of professional practice. I hope it will be the pleasure of the body to engross the bill and pass it to its third reading.
House Bill 1263, a bill to amend and reenact Section 54.13446 of the Code of Virginia relating to Drug Control Act, Controlled Substances, Schedule 1, reported from Health, Welfare and Institutions.
The delegate from Middlesex, Delegate Hodges.
Thank you. Again, Madam Speaker, House Bill 1263 adds certain chemicals to Schedule 1 of the Drug Control Act. The Board of Pharmacy has added these chemicals to Schedule 1 in an expedited regulatory process. A substance added by this process is removed from the schedule after 18 months unless this body has enacted adding these substances to this schedule. And ladies and gentlemen, just for your information, what the Department of Forensic Science found this year and was then scheduled by the board through regulation were four synthetic opioids, nine research chemicals with hallucinogenic properties, two stimulants, and three cannabinoid agents. Your favorable support ensures these chemicals, that have proven to be dangerous, remain in Schedule 1 and continue to send a strong message to the criminals who want to profit off the health of our children and communities, and we will not stand for it. Madam Speaker, I hope it will be the pleasure of the body to engross the bill and pass it to its third reading.
House Bill 1341, a bill to amend and reenact Section 3685.1 of the Code of Virginia relating to the Manufactured Housing Construction and Safety Standards Law, Provision Not Set Out, Applicability, reported from General Laws.
The delegate from Chesapeake, Delegate Lefwitch.
Madam Speaker, members of the body, House Bill 1341 is a co-commission bill. Co-commission is made up of a body of senators, delegates, governor's office, retired judges, active judges, and former legislators and people from legislative services. It's their function to declutter the code, and so this bill really just declutters that particular code section, taking out the purpose of the bill and only leaving the edicts of the General Assembly. I hope it's the will of the body to engross the bill and pass it to its third reading.
House Bill 1342, a bill to amend the Code of Virginia by adding Sections numbered 55.1705.1 and 55.11218.1 relating to Virginia Residential Property Disclosure Act and Virginia Residential Landlord and Tenet Act, Required Disclosures, Lead Pipes, reported from General Laws with substitute.
The delegate from Virginia Beach, Delegate Askew.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move the committee substitute.
Shall the substitute be agreed to? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the substitute is agreed to. Delegate Askew.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Members of the body, HB 1342 seeks to add language to the buyer beware form, which is required to be given to every buyer in Virginia, relating to the lead-based pipes and defective drywall. The language provides consumer protections by advising buyers to use their due diligence to determine whether a property has lead pipes or defective drywall. The bill also seeks to repeal the mandatory disclosure of the existence of defective drywall on a property. There are very few properties left that contain defective drywall, and if a real estate license knew about the presence of defective drywall, a disclosure would be required under the law as a material adverse fact. Madam Speaker, I hope it will be the pleasure of the body to engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
Madam Speaker, over here. Go away.
Delegate Born.
Yes, Madam Speaker. Could that bill go to the regular calendar after engrossment, please?
House Bill 1342 will move to the regular calendar after engrossment.
Madam Speaker.
Delegate Simon.
Madam Speaker, before we engross all these bills, I also, on a similar vein, I'd like to have House Bill 310 be moved to the regular calendar after engrossment.
House Bill 310 will be moved to the regular calendar after engrossment. House Bill 1562 has been moved to the regular calendar.
Shall the bills be engrossed and passed on to their third reading? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the bills are engrossed and passed on to their third reading.
House bills on second reading, regular, sorry. House bills on second reading, regular calendar. House Bill 10, a bill to amend and reenact Section 19.2389 as it shall become effective of the Code of Virginia and to amend the Code of Virginia by adding in Title 6.2, a chapter numbered 26, consisting of Sections numbered 6.22600 through 6.22617 relating to student loans, licensing of qualified education loan servicers, civil penalties, reported from Labor and Commerce with substitute, and there are floor amendments.
Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Simon.
Madam Speaker, I think first I need to move the committee substitute because the floor amendments are drawn to the substitute. So I hope it would be the pleasure of the body to adopt the committee substitute.
Shall the substitute be agreed to? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the substitute is agreed to. Delegate Simon.
Madam Speaker, I think the clerk is at her desk. Two very technical floor amendments that need to be reported. I think they're probably short enough that the clerk can read the whole amendments for the body.
House Bill, amendments to House Bill 10 by Delegate Simon. Number one, line 92, substitute after providing insert of, line 92, substitute after bond, strike, require, insert, required.
Speaker, speaking of the amendments briefly.
Delegate Simon.
I got a note from Legislative Services that they continue to proof this substitute. They found, again, these two typographical errors, and so what these amendments do is add the word of and changes the word required to required so that the sentence reads like a proper English sentence. I hope it would be the pleasure of the body to adopt the floor amendments.
All those in favor of the floor amendments say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the floor amendments are agreed to. Delegate Simon.
Madam Speaker, members of the House, House Bill 10 creates a student loan borrower bill of rights and requires the licensing of student loan servicing companies in the Commonwealth of Virginia. The student loan borrower bill of rights will extend basic consumer protections to borrowers. It will require student loan servicing companies to be licensed to the Bureau of Financial Institutions, like similar financial providers, including banks, credit unions, mortgage lenders, and payday lenders. Some of those bill of rights are, just so everybody understands what's clear, right now, student loan borrowers are unregulated at the state level, despite being, again, the second largest source of debt in the United States, second only to mortgage debt. And so there's no way that a consumer has any place to go in the state of Virginia to complain that their student loan servicing company is misapplying their funds. So if you send in a payment that's designated for principal, it doesn't get applied that way, you can't complain about that. If they report you to the Credit Bureau for being late on your mortgage payments, but your payment was on time and you know it was on time, you don't have a remedy like you would for your mortgage company here at the state level or like you would for any other consumer lender of funds. If you call and ask them if you're eligible for a public service forgiveness program, and they tell you no, but it turns out, in fact, you are eligible for such a program, you have no remedy at state law and under state regulations, you have no regulatory body to go and complain to. So what this bill allows you to do is have a remedy, either by having the SEC affirmatively assess penalties, because they'll be regulated by the SEC. It gives the Attorney General the authority to pursue actions under the Virginia Consumer Protection Act and creates a private right of action for Virginians in state courts. And so I hope it will be the pleasure of the body to engross this bill and pass it to its third reading.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
House Bill 518, a bill to amend and reenact Section 55.1703 of the Code of Virginia relating to Virginia Residential Property Disclosure Act, Disclosures for a Buyer to Beware, Residential Building Energy Analyst, reported from General Laws with substitute.
The delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Boliva.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Move the committee substitute.
Shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the committee substitute is agreed to. Delegate Boliva.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And ladies and gentlemen of the House, House Bill 518 is a recommendation of the Housing Commission. What it does is it adds obtaining a residential building energy analysis to the disclosure statements provided to a prospective purchaser. And so this is the same way that you have a buyer beware and that the buyer ought to do a home inspection. This now says that you ought to also consider an energy analysis. This is not mandatory. Just so you know, energy analysts are licensed through DEPOR. We now have about 800 throughout the state. On average, if a homeowner implements the energy analyst recommendation, they save about $300 to $400 per year. So it's actually one of the most cost-efficient ways to save money on energy costs. Madam Speaker, I move that we engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
House Bill 519, a bill to amend and reenact Section 55.11202 of the Code of Virginia relating to the Virginia Residential Landlord and Tenet Act, Certain Notices of Termination to Contact/To Contain Legal Aid Contact Information, reported from General Laws with substitute.
The delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Boliva.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Move the committee substitute.
Shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, the committee substitute is agreed to. Delegate Boliva.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Ladies and gentlemen of the House, House Bill 519 requires that the eviction notice for someone receiving rental assistance through a federal, state, or local program has to include information about how to contact the state legal aid program. Last year, for those who were here, you remember that we passed some very significant reform with respect to reducing the number of evictions in Virginia, and I know those will have a lot of positive outcomes. However, none of those reforms are going to mean much if somebody who is facing an eviction and has the pressure of potentially being evicted isn't familiar with their rights and doesn't understand their legal process. So this simply makes sure that those individuals have access to the information for how to obtain information from legal aid at the statewide level. Madam Speaker, I move that we engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, the bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
House Bill 552, a bill to amend and reenact Section 54.12900 of the Code of Virginia relating to definition of birth control, reported from Health, Welfare, and Institutions.
Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Watts.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. If the 100 members of this body are typical of the population that we represent, 97% have been involved in using birth control. This HB 552 simply clarifies that any FDA-approved birth control will not be termed as an abortion either in the health practice sections of our laws or in our criminal laws. There are at least 50 different references under the control and definition of medical practice within our statutes, so that this is fully in line with practices of the past. I would conclude by saying that the need for this clarity, I believe, is best demonstrated by the fact that I am one of a long line of women legislators, both senators and delegates, who have introduced this language since 2002. And the fact that it hasn't passed underscores the need for this clarification. During that time, on several different occasions, I have received very good-looking material on the sidewalks as I've entered the General Assembly Office Building, which always has contained a very interesting article that, however it is framed, it always reads the same with the title, "What About Birth Control?", and I will read only its first sentence. "All hormonal contraceptives, the pill, patch, mini-pill, shot, vaginal ring, emergency contraception, IUDs, have, et cetera, have the capability to cause an abortion." Again, the clarity on behalf of the 97% of the population who depend upon birth control needs to be protected in our laws, and I hope it will be the pleasure of the body to engross House Bill 552 and pass it on to its third reading.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, the bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
House Bill 727, a bill to amend the Code of Virginia by adding a Section numbered 56484.1 relating to E-911 dispatchers, training in telecommunicator, cardiopulmonary resuscitation, and emergency medical dispatch, reported from Labor and Commerce with substitute.
Delegate from Arlington, Delegate Hope.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move the committee substitute.
Shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, the committee substitute is agreed to. Delegate Hope.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Members of the body, when someone calls 911, the time it takes for paramedics to arrive can be the difference between life and death. This is especially an issue in rural areas. So in a situation where every second counts, most people would assume that the 911 operator knows how to walk the caller through CPR or other life-saving measures over the phone, but that's not always the case. This bill would require all 911 operators by 2022 to be trained in telephone CPR and emergency medical dispatch training by 2024. This is a cost-effective way to increase survival rates of people who experience cardiac arrest or in need of life-saving measures. We heard testimony from the public that showed that only less than 10% of Virginia's population is currently not covered with 911 operators having this capability. Putting this in the code with a reasonable time limit will be the push necessary to cover the entire Commonwealth. It will be the pleasure of the body to engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, the bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
House Bill 810, a bill to direct the Department of Housing and Community Development and the Virginia Housing Development Authority to convene a stakeholder meeting on the establishment of a Virginia Opportunity Tax Credit Program, reported from General Laws.
Delegate from Richmond City, Delegate Born.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, House Bill 810 simply does exactly what the Clerk says. It establishes a stakeholder advisory group led by the leadership at the Department of Housing and Community Development, as along with the Virginia Housing Development Authority, to create and develop model legislation and regulation so that we might, in a subsequent session, establish a state low-income housing tax credit program to augment and supplement the federal program, which has been so useful in bringing affordable housing units online. And it'd be my hope that the body would engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, the bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
House Bill 932, a bill to repeal Chapter 23.4, Sections 54.1, 2355 through 54.1, 2358 of Title 54.1 of the Code of Virginia relating to the Department of Professional and Occupational Regulation, natural gas, automobile mechanics, and technicians, reported from General Laws.
Delegate from Newport News, Delegate Simons.
Madam Speaker, I rise to speak to the bill.
Delegate Simons, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. HB 932 deregulates the certification program for natural gas auto mechanics, of which there are zero regulates in the state of Virginia. This bill implements recommendations of the J-LARC report to eliminate unnecessary occupational regulation in the Commonwealth. I move that the bill be engrossed and passed to third reading.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, the bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
House Bill 967, a bill to amend and reenact Section 54.1119 of the Code of Virginia relating to professions and occupations expediting the issuance of credentials to spouses of military service members, reported from General Laws with substitute.
Delegate from Enrico, Delegate Willett.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move the committee substitute.
Shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, the committee substitute is agreed to. Delegate Willett.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, this legislation will improve Virginia's already-existing expedited process for the professional licensing of military spouses. Specifically, it adds three areas for military spouses, those in surrounding states, those who are with a federally deployed National Guard, and then an additional provision to cover veterans who have left service within the last year for their applications. I wanted to recognize my colleague, Delegate Koiner, for introducing a bill that recognizes that last provision. Just to note, for context, Virginia, across the country, military spouses are historically at a higher level of unemployment and underemployment. It's high, for the unemployment side, it's high as 13%, which is over three and a half times the regular unemployment rate. So again, this bill is to help that process, gives more discretion to DHP and DEPOR for that process. Madam Speaker, I hope it will be the will of the body to engross and pass this for third reading.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, the bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
House Bill 991, a bill to amend and reenact Section 46.21102 of the Code of Virginia relating to firefighting equipment, weight limitation on interstate, reported from Transportation with Amendment.
Delegate from Loudoun, Delegate Reed.
Madam Speaker, I move the committee amendment.
Shall the committee amendment be agreed to? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, the committee amendment is agreed to. Delegate Reed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Members of the House, House Bill 991 clarifies code language relating to emergency vehicle weight limits on interstate bridges and overpasses. The bill is necessary to bring us into compliance with the Federal FAST Act, which is fixing America's surface transportation, and is necessary to ensure that we do not lose $77 million in federal transportation funding. I hope it will be the pleasure of the body to engross the bill and move it on to its third reading.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? Those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, the bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
House Bill 371 has gone by for the day. House Bill 378, from page six of the calendar, a bill to repeal the third enactment of Chapter 183 of the Acts of Assembly of 2017 relating to comprehensive harm reduction programs, public health emergency, repeal sunset, reported from Health, Welfare, and Institutions.
Delegate from Roanoke City, Delegate Rasool.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, ladies and gentlemen of the House, House Bill 378 is a bill that repeals a sunset on the program established in 2017 that allows the Commission of Health to establish and operate local or regional harm reduction programs. This bill promotes a trauma-informed approach to responding to the addiction crisis and is a key program as we address the opioid epidemic. I hope it will be the will of the body to engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, the bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
House Bill 637, moved from page seven of the calendar, a bill to amend and reenact Section 63.21900 of the Code of Virginia relating to child support, reasonable cost of healthcare coverage, reported from Health, Welfare, and Institutions.
Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Samira.
Madam Speaker, while I really would like this bill to proceed, I believe that the motion from the party from the other side, in all fairness, was that this go by for the day.
Delegate from Shenandoah, Delegate Gilbert.
Parliamentary inquiry, what is the status of that bill? We thought it had gone by for the day already.
That request has not been made yet. Would you like to make that request?
So that would be my request, Madam Speaker. Thank you.
Thank you, Delegate Gilbert.
House Bill 637 will go by for the day.
Okay, all those in favor of HB 637 going by for the day, shall say aye. Those opposed, HB 637 will go by for the day.
House Bill 1562 was moved from page 15 of the calendar, a bill to amend the Code of Virginia by adding in Chapter 37 of Title 54.1, an Article numbered 2, consisting of Sections numbered 54.1, 3709.1, and other sections of the Code of Virginia relating to music therapy licensure, reported from Health, Welfare, and Institutions with substitute.
Delegate from Bodata, Delegate Head.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move the committee substitute.
Shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, the committee substitute is agreed to. Delegate Head.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Ladies and gentlemen of the House, last year in this body, we took a look at this request from music therapists and amended the bill that was working through at that time to request the Department of Health professions to take a look at it and see if it was necessary. They came back with the report and said that it was. Ordinarily, they're looking for one of two outcomes, either demonstrable improved outcomes or demonstrable harm in the absence of licensure. In this particular case, they found both, and so they have said that we should be putting it forward. This bill simply puts the framework necessary for that to happen, and so I would ask the body to engross the bill and pass it on to its third reading.
Shall the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, the bill is engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
That's the end of the second reading, regular calendar. We move on to resolutions on regular calendar. SJR 1 has gone by for the day. Madam Speaker, that completes the calendar.
Per House Rule 51, the House returns to morning hour. Does the Clerk have any additional announcements or communications?
Meeting announcements for Friday, January 24. Rules Committee meets immediately upon adjournment of the House in House Room 1. Courts of Justice Committee is canceled. Courts of Justice Civil Subcommittee meets immediately upon adjournment of the Rules Committee in House Room 1. That's a change in time, immediately upon adjournment of the Rules Committee. Courts of Justice Criminal Subcommittee, also a change in time, immediately upon adjournment of Rules Committee, House Room 3. Appropriations Committee has been canceled. Appropriations Subcommittee on Commerce, Agriculture, and Natural Resources meets 15 minutes after adjournment of the full committee in the shared committee room. Is it meeting today?
Madam Speaker, there's no full meeting, a full court's meeting today, just subcommittees.
So the Appropriations Subcommittee on Commerce, Agriculture, and Natural Resources meets at half hour after adjournment of the House? Shared committee room. Appropriations Elementary and Secondary Subcommittee meets immediately upon adjournment of the Commerce, Agriculture, and Natural Resources Subcommittee in the shared committee room. Meeting Sunday, January 26. The Virginia Legislative Black Caucus meets at 4:00 p.m., 300B Subcommittee Room. Meetings Monday morning, January 27. Education, SOL, and SOQ Subcommittee meets 7:00 a.m., House Committee Room. This is a change in time, 7:00 a.m. Cancer Caucus meets at 8:00 a.m., 300B Subcommittee Room. Finance Subcommittee Meeting Number One, Subcommittee Number One, meets at 8:00 a.m., 400B Subcommittee Room. That's a change of location, 400C Subcommittee Room. Finance Subcommittee Number Two meets at 8:00 a.m., 400A Subcommittee Room. Also a change in location, 400A Subcommittee Room. Communications Technology and Innovation Communications Subcommittee meets at 8:00 a.m., House Room 3. Appropriations Capital Outlay Subcommittee meets 8:30 a.m., Shared Committee Room. That's a change in location, Shared Committee Room. Health, Welfare, and Institutions Behavioral Health Subcommittee meets at 8:30 a.m., 400B Subcommittee Room. Press Conference on Virginia School Funding, 8:30 a.m., House Briefing Room. Committee on Education meets 9:00 a.m., House Committee Room. Press Conference on ERA, 9:00 a.m., House Briefing Room. Communications Technology and Innovation Committee, 10:00 a.m., House Room 3. Press Conference Student Loan Debt Legislation, 10:30 a.m., House Briefing Room. The Democratic Caucus meets at 11:00 a.m., House Room 1. Republican Caucus meets at 11:00 a.m., House Room 2. Madam Speaker, that completes my meetings.
Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Simons.
Madam Speaker, I rise for a person of an announcement.
Delegate Simon, you have the floor.
An announcement and a request, I'm going to be in big trouble, guys. I don't know where the list of sign-ons has gone for the Washington Nationals, so if I could get that back, please, I would appreciate it. So hopefully you all got a chance to sign on to that, but again, if whoever's got it, would please return it to me. I'd be eternally grateful. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring.
Madam Speaker, I move that when the House adjourn today, it adjourn to reconvene Monday, January 27 at 12:00 noon.
Delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring, moves that when the House adjourn today, it adjourn to reconvene Monday, January 27 at 12 o'clock noon. As many as favor the motion will say aye. Those opposed, the motion is agreed to. Delegate Herring.
Madam Speaker, I move that the House do now adjourn.
Delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring, moves that the House do now adjourn. As many as favor the motion will say aye. Those opposed, the motion is agreed to. The House stands adjourned until Monday, January 27 at 12 o'clock noon.